We're glad to have all of you with us today. And I'll call it the Board of Commissioners' work session for August 13th, 2019. This time, and we welcome elected officials. We've got quite a number of those people that have Judge in front of their name today. We've got Judge Beavers, and Judge Succi, and Chief Mancher, Judge Valwina, Judge Beatty, and Judge Norman. And do not leave our desk. Yep. Just glad to have all of you with us today. I'll take that list now, Brian, and have your phone on. You can turn it off. Always, it's always so good to have Senior Chaplain Joey Meeks with us. He does so much for the county, and he's going to bring us your invitation this morning and lead us in our pledge stand. Are you ready?
That's all saying and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you so much for the many blessings of life. And Lord, we thank you so much for our county and Father, the folks that makes it up. I pray, God, that you just build a hedge, Father, around our county, Father, even though that we know that we're living in evil days, Father. We thank you for our elected officials, Father, that make it safe for us. I pray for commissioners today and whatever that they are going through, Father, today, and whatever they got a vote on, I pray that you give them wisdom. I pray that you give them guidance, Father. And we pray for each one that you just touch. We pray for our young people, the things that they're facing in the schools today that we never even thought about, Father. Pray that you touch them. We pray for everyone that's in public safety. I pray, Father, that you protect them. Pray, Father, that you keep them safe today. We love you, thank you, and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Chaplain. You set in an awesome tone. The August 13th, 2019 work session minutes and the August 13th, where we have more meeting minutes are available for review. And if you'd like to start out with positively calling this morning, there's something that happened just the end of last week, a new fire truck, and let's pay attention to that.
About three years ago, we budgeted in the spots, and we were able to get it approved in the spot. As the chief, it makes me proud to know that we have such great paperwork, communication, fantastic. And not usually, these things don't usually fall together like they do at other departments, but I know that I've got some of the best in the state and probably in the southeast, and I know that as the chief.
As an old law enforcement officer, I know how critical it is for the mission that you guys have, because when you're out on the scene and you need help, you guys are coming. That is an awesome truck. It really is. And so, I mean, I'm so glad that we're here today to celebrate that.
In the 1800s, they think this dates back to the 1800s before motorized vehicles, a fire department would get a new wagon, a four-stone wagon. And it was a very exciting time for that city or that department. And all the surrounding departments, the dignitaries, the politicians, and people from other agencies would come and be part of the ceremony to actually take the old wagon, take it out of the station, take the new wagon, and physically push it in. So that's what we're going to do today.
Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Ms. Linda Taylor for retirement with 40 years of service at Polley County. And proud to have Judge Valwina come up and share with us a couple of things about Linda.
Not too much, because I knew, I've been thinking about this, and I knew if I talked too long, I'd start getting all teary and all. So we're just, I got sworn in September 13th, 2002. It was my youngest son's first birthday, as I can always remember. But Linda and I, we are a few weeks short of 17 years together. And I tell you, both in the office and personally, we've been through a lot of ups and downs, and it's been an amazing ride. I started about five or six years ago coming to the budget meetings with my letter saying, y'all, Linda's, we know when Linda's going to retire, and she's like three employees. I've got to have more help. And little by little, you know, I keep coming every year and asking for a little bit more and a little bit more, and thankfully, y'all have always, you know, worked with us and when you could give me those extra people. And about two years ago, and then last year especially, we kind of reached the point where we had enough staff and we're doing well, but we were keeping up. And at the same time, not just keeping up, but kind of getting ahead of the curve for us. And at the same time, you would think, you know, when someone becomes a short timer like Linda, you sort of hear them saying, oh, yeah, they're kind of coming in late, leaving early, and not working. Linda did the opposite. About two years ago, she started gearing up with this idea that when I leave here, this is going to be the best, you know, the best magistrate court has ever been. And it is at this point. We got an award last year for case completion. Very few courts, like the top 10% of the courts in each level of court, class of courts, got it, and we got it. First year they gave it, we got it last year. It comes out in a September, October timeframe. We're hoping to get it again this year. But the reason we got it is because the clerk's office does so much work, and Linda's been the one, you know, just pushing us and pushing us to get this stuff done. At the same time, making sure we're all cross-trained so that everybody, if someone's out, we can all kind of pick up and do what we need to do. We've, you know, cleared out all old closed files, shredded everything, and loaded everything, scanned things in that we need to. I mean, it is amazing how much she's accomplished in the last two years, you know, obviously on top of the 15 before that with me. And so, I can't, I can't tell y'all how touched I am to be able to come up and speak for her. There's a lot of people here, you know, professionally and family-wise that know her and know how much she does for all of us. It's amazing to think, you know, that she's been here working for the county for 40 years. When you talk about different stuff, I mean, we went from the dungeon in the old courthouse, you know, then we spent five or six years in the annex, and then we've been here 10 years, you know. But then when you talk with her, she talks about the old courthouse. The old courthouse isn't sitting up there in downtown. The old courthouse is about half that size, and she worked there when it was just a little thing that probably none of y'all or hardly any of y'all remember. And she talks about, oh, yeah, they did this addition and all this stuff, and it's totally different, you know. And so, when you listen to her and talk with her about, you know, the old days, it's truly inspiring to think of someone, you know, going 40 years. So, I mean, you know, we're almost in 2020. If you think back to 1980, where were you? Well, that's when she started with Polley County, and she's been here ever since. So, you know, think about where you were in 1980, and you come up here. A lot of people in this room, you know, were probably in elementary school or middle school, you know, and you've been working for the county ever since then, and that's what she's done. So, you know, I'm going to miss her tremendously. We all are, and we're very excited. Friday is her, is her going away celebration. We're going to have our clerk, the new clerk, it'll be Kristi Moak. She's going to be sworn in at 9:00 in the morning in probate court by Judge Anderson. And then from 1:00 to 3:00 downstairs in the cafeteria area, we're going to have a going away celebration. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. The Board of Commissioners are so proud to be able to present to Linda Taylor this plaque. Doesn't seem like near enough, but this is presented by Linda Taylor, and great appreciation for 40 years of dedicated service to Polley County Government by the Polley County Board of Commissioners. This day is the 2nd and 3rd. It's almost. So come on up if you ever need to bring up.
We want to talk around you. Go up for the picture. Go ahead.
Stand up there for the press.
Yeah, we want to get family up there. Careful of that.
Who is that guy?
This guy's my dad.
Linda's father, her daughter and son-in-law, and one of her sons.
Baker Street Attorney, federal best 19, 2019. The Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Christine Stinchcomb for outstanding accomplishment of being awarded Member of the Year at the state level with Polley County Tax Commissioner's Office. And Mr. Dave Stokes will tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have a very proud announcement. The Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, better known as the GWAO, was established in 1948 with 1,500 members statewide. Their primary mission is to promote integrity and professionalism in the assessment administration through education, leadership, and cooperation. Each year, the GWAO holds an annual conference in July. At the conclusion of the event, one member is selected as Member of the Year. I am proud to announce one of our only exceptional staff members has been selected as the Member of the Year, Ms. Christine Stinchcomb.
Come on up, Christine, and as she's coming, I'm going to read the certificate of recognition from the board here. Certificate presented to Christine Stinchcomb in recognition of outstanding accomplishment of being awarded the Member of the Year at the state level with the Polley County Tax Commissioners' Office. Very proud of it. You got any family members? Family members come over. Do you want to read it? Oh, we still have that to read? You been reading? Yeah.
This is the actual resolution Chris was awarded at the summer conference. Whereas Christine Stinchcomb has been a member of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials for many years, and whereas Ms. Stinchcomb serves as Chair of the GWAO Technology and GIS Committee, and whereas Ms. Stinchcomb has had a long and successful career spanning over 20 years for the Polley County Board of Tax Assessors as a senior cartographer, whereby she has advanced her profession and community, and she asserts. Whereas Ms. Stinchcomb was awarded the prestigious IWAO Cadastro-Maxing Specialist Designation, being only the third person in Georgia to receive this designation. And whereas Ms. Stinchcomb has served coalition of geospatial organizations and currently serves on the National Geospatial Advisory Committee, and whereas Ms. Stinchcomb, through her own time and resources, has become a IWAO instructor generously offered her services to advance the educational opportunities for the assessment professions and members of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials. Be it hereby resolved that the Executive Board and the Executive Director of GWAO, on behalf of over 15 members of said Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, extend to Ms. Christine Stinchcomb our deep and sincere appreciation for her dedication and service to the organization and our heartfelt wishes for continued health, service, and well-being. There, it also be bestowed upon Ms. Stinchcomb the 2019 Annual GWAO Member of the Year Award of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials by the Executive Board and the Executive
Got a special treat today. As an invited guest, we have Mr. Mark Townsell with the United States Department of Commerce as Atlanta Regional, at the Atlanta Regional Census Center. And he's a census specialist, a partnership specialist. And Mark is here with one of his coworkers. And Mark, if you'd like to come up with us and come up and share a couple minutes with us about the, can we assist?
Since Mr. Rebecca told me to keep it real short, I'll leave myself some notes so I can stay on target. My name is Mark Townsell. I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau out of Atlanta. The Atlanta region, which covers seven states. My focus is on two counties, Cobb, where I live, and Polley. So, one, I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. And then two, I want to commend you. Polley County is well positioned right now for a successful and complete county in the 2020 census. With the leadership of Rebecca, and obviously the support of your Chairman Carmichael, the preparation work, the planning that's been done, the dedication is impressive. Looked at some of the events that are scheduled. Ms. Rebecca's already identified some of the hard-to-count communities within the county, and all that's critical in order to achieve 2020, a successful 2020 census. So, one, I want to thank you for your partnership. Thank you for your commitment and your dedication. Let me just take you through a couple of things. You know, as the 13th most populous county in the state, your numbers are very important. So obviously, the government, there is a complete county committee at the statewide level, and the government is also counting on every county, right, for their participation. Let me give you a very brief summary of where we are. Our mission is real simple. We want to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. It is just as simple as that. Nothing special. Currently, right now, we're engaged in what I would call address canvassing. So about 75% of all addresses have been identified throughout the country, including this county, really aerial, using imaging, et cetera. There's about 25%, but we have to actually physically now go out. And what the canvases are doing is just, they have handheld devices, and they have a list of addresses. They go around and check and say, yes, there is a residence, there is a house at that address. This, again, helps us, right, as we identify all the homes, all the households, all the places that we need to go and you need to go in a tour, in order to achieve that county. So, as you all meet with your constituents, I really just want you to remember three things. So I'll try to keep it simple. 2020 census is easy, it's safe, and it's important. So as you meet with your constituents, if you could deliver that message, that would be very helpful. Why is it easy? You know, in the past, really up until 2020, all the census, all the responses had to be done via paper ballot, right? So you'd get this form in the mail, same 10 questions, and everyone had to respond via paper. Well, now, this time for 2020, we've added two additional capabilities online. So now, folks, when they receive their mailing, somewhere around mid-March, they'll be able to respond online. Now, why, why is that important in a place like Polley County? You have over 165,000 people, 52,000 or so households. In those households, about 92% of those folks have computers. About 83% of them have broadband and internet connection. So that says about 83% of your population is already positioned, or the households are already positioned, to take advantage of the online response, which means educating them, making them aware of this is simply all that we have to do. Obviously, there's a 17% or so population that doesn't have that capability. So we've added a phone capability. So again, now folks can respond by telephone. And on the other end of that phone, supporting about three dozen languages, people will be able to call in, give their identification number, and respond to those same 10 questions with folks on the other end of the phone. And then, lastly, if you either request one, or if you haven't responded via phone or internet, then the paper ballot is still available, either by request or at the last minute. As we get into the April timeframe, past the census day, we have canvases out there or numerators that will actually go to the door, those folks will receive paper ballots. So again, it's that you can respond online, by telephone, or using a paper ballot. It's safe. You know, as a census employee, we take a mandatory lifetime oath of confidentiality, and it's backed up by, by, like, up to $250,000 in penalties and up to five years in prison if we violate them. And the Census Bureau has a wonderful record of not violating the confidentiality. And now, with the online opportunity and the telephone, we're putting new tools and technologies, again, to ensure the confidentiality and protection of that information. And thirdly, it's important. Why is it important for two reasons, for power and for money. I mean, you all know that there's 435 congressional seats in the United States, and that's it. All those seats are portioned based on census data. It's a zero-sum game. 2010, Georgia picked up an extra congressional seat, which meant somewhere in the country they had to lose one. So it's a zero-sum game, very important, that we count everyone to maintain, to maintain it. Also, state districting is also tied to the census. And as you know, at the end of 2020, there will be some redistricting solely based on the census data. And now the money. Over $675 billion is allocated annually solely, again, based on census data. And those federal funds are allocated and support programs like housing, education, healthcare, transportation, et cetera. So those funds, again, $675 billion, we want to make sure Georgia and the county of Polley get our fair share. All of that is given based on, based on the numbers. Also, census data is used to assist state and local governments and private sector in delivering economic development and goods and services to communities like yours and others across the countries. So keep this in mind, because a lot of times, where there's need out there, the assumption is the census data or the allocation of these funds is based on need. It's really not. It's based on numbers. So the money and the power follows the numbers, not the need. Again, why it's so important for us to get an accurate, accurate count. So for you, if you could just remember to, since the 2020 census, it's easy, it's safe, and it's important. If you could deliver that message to your constituents, that would be great. So let me thank you in advance, one, for your commitment, certainly Chairman Carmichael, your commitment to supporting Rebecca's efforts, and she's doing a fabulous job organizing annuity leaders, government officials, faith-based organizations, all those critical, critical constituents that can help in identifying and handling a census. Also, I want to thank you in advance for your commitment. You would encourage your constituents to participate in the 2020 census. And finally, I want to thank you in advance, if you would spread the word, and this is why I want to leave you with this, if you'd spread the word, we are hiring. We're trying to hire over half a million people this year. We need to hire folks in Polley County, because as the canvases are out, as numerators are out, they know the community. So if we can hire folks in Polley County to help with that work, not only do they know the community, they're trusty voices in the community. Makes it a lot easier for folks to be receptive and to respond if they notice and feel like they're being challenged by folks in their community. So thank you. Do you have any questions for me? And hopefully, I stayed under the three minutes that Rebecca gave. Do you have any questions for me?
Great report, Mark, relating to two census.
And the last thing I would say, though, is the resolution that you are, that's in front of you. Again, that's just another commitment, or another example of your firm commitment to a successful 2020 census. We appreciate it.
Since you've been here, you want to introduce your helper?
Yes, she's actually, she is, Pearl is new to the census and has come out to what we call shadow, to see what happens in something like this. And then in the back, Will is actually our media specialist. So since the meeting was open, I talked to Rebecca, and he just wanted to come in and take a couple pictures. And obviously, something that we would include in our newsletters, et cetera. So appreciate the opportunity for us to take part in this.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Is there any town identified by March, citizens who know y'all?
Yes, yeah, a couple things. One, they'll have, they'll have clear badges, right, that they'll, that they'll be wearing. The other thing that we're doing is we're notifying, and I think I saw, I think I saw this too good. We'll notify the sheriff's office and police departments. So when we plan on coming into a certain county, they will know. So they'll know what to expect, when to expect this, what kind of identification we have. Also, we inform them as to what we will be doing and what we won't. We won't be asking for social security numbers. We won't be asking for personal data. It's really just to simply identify the house, and then, and then when we get to the numeration point, just get the census count. So yes, there'll be clear identification. And like I said, Will knows, I'll make sure that Rebecca knows, so when we are in Polley County, they'll be at his side. And for the jobs, very flexible. I think the rate in Polley is, you know, $14, $15, or $15 an hour. Put some cards in the back. But if you would tell your constituents to go to 2020census.gov/jobs, 2020census.gov/jobs, and apply, and that, that could be for anyone that needs in this room. Very flexible hours. You basically give them your skill and tell them when you might be available, and then someone from the Census Bureau will contact you.
Thanks again.
Thank you, sir.
Today, we have four bid awards. The first one is the Gus Action Award, the construction contract for the Ridge Road, Cochran Store Road, and the Bob Hunt Road, Roundabout. This rounded out project to, awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, Barto Payden, in the amount of $1,894,934.11. So this is located in post two and three, being an intersection. Got a couple of commissioners representing there, Ms. Pollard and George.
I'll be quick, because I don't want to steal Georgia's thunder. I think this is a big day. But we have, we received four bids for this, and the bids range from $1,894,934.11 to And we are pleased to recommend the award to the lowest bidder. Barto Payden.
Please steer my thunder, David. I have no problem with that. Little background information, you know, this is obviously located in post two, post three. Intersection currently operates as a multi-way stop intersection. It's a busy location with over 14,000 cars per day. There's pretty a good amount of delays in the AMP count, particularly with the county schools in the area. And the conceptual preliminary engineering part of this project, Roundabout, was identified as the best solution for the intersection in terms of long-term traffic. You know, the good thing about a roundabout, as you approach it, you have to slow down from a straight-line path, that it basically reduces high-speed, severe crashes, and also... also, um, it basically takes away any left-turn traffic that has to cross over, so again, it makes it much safer. Um, that intersection where Roundabouts have been installed with over previous type controls, um, tip, most crash, most locations have been reduced by thirty-five percent crash reduction, and injury crashes have been reduced by about sixty percent. For this project, like, four bids were received, and the bids are reasonably close to each other, but low three bidders were within five-point-five percent of each other. That basically says that's, that's a pretty good bid to me. Um, and this bid is twelve percent lower than our engineer assessment. Um, we've utilized varto paving on past and current projects. They just finished up our subdivision paving project, completed the one-twenty, um, East Paulding Drive project, and they've got a couple of other projects with us. They've done good work over the years, and, um, I'd say I enjoy working with them. They've also, um, constructed two Roundabouts in the metro Atlanta area, so they have experienced this type of work. This project is currently in our SPOSS program, and it will be funded by SPOSS, and it has a twelve-month, um, completion date. Technically, it's not our first Roundabout in the county, uh, I think there's one at the Walmart at Asman Drive, and there's obviously the one out here in front of the building, but, um, this will be our first Roundabout that DOT has contracted out, and will basically, obviously will serve the most traffic. And I'd like to thank our engineering division staff for managing this project to get us this, to award. Any, is there any questions that y'all may have?
Questions? Some good backup material, we appreciate that always.
Thank you.
Bid number two is a discussion to award the purchase of string mitigation credits required for the Richmond Creek Reservoir Project, up to thirty thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-seven point four string credits. Of course, this is in post four.
This is a different purchase, um, and, as we have two participants, and we are going to need to purchase both of them. So, well, we need thirty point five nine seven, um, thirty thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-seven point four string credits, and we have, um, each bank has some of those credits, but they don't have all of those credits. So we're actually have, um, will purchase from two, and this will allow us, in the event that additional credits come available. We do not have an offer for entire thirty point, thirty thousand, so we're waiting, um, hopefully those to open up. And this will allow us to purchase, uh, right at twenty thousand credits. So, if you have any questions.
Let me just add that, um, these are for banks in our primary service area. Um, our core permit, uh, states that the preference, that the first priority is to purchase them within that primary service area. Then there is a secondary service area that reaches a broader geographic area, um, and then there's a third option, a lower-tier option, which is a payment in lieu of purchasing credits. Um, so this is our first step in fulfilling the, uh, the remainder of our thirty thousand credits that are needed, and, um, and, and we will continue. There's a supply and demand issue for credits in, uh, in our primary service area. There's both Richland Creek and the Edelwater and Sewer Authority also has a reservoir project, and we're purchasing a lot of credits at the same time.
Good, George. Any other questions, listeners? Number three is a discussion to award the contract for timber harvesting associated with the Richmond Creek Reservoir Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Triple J Logging, in the amount of one million two-hundred-and-two thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Post four.
This is about somewhat similar. We already made the award to the low bidder, um, and this one, we had two bids, one at two point, two million or two, two million two-hundred-and-eighty thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars, and, um, the low bid was funding at two-hundred-and-two thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-four.
Morning, commissioners. I have a couple of slides here.
What's your name, sir?
Uh, Kelly Comstock with Bryan Caldwell. I'm the program manager for the Richmond Creek Water Supply Program. I'm happy to be here today. It's exciting, um, to be able to be here to present one of the last things that we have to do on this project before we, uh, actually start filling the reservoir, and hence to clear the bowl of the, of the reservoir itself. Um, and the reason we do that is there's a lot of trees and underbrush there right now. Um, if, if it wasn't cleared out, it would become, uh, issues with, with voters and other people on the reservoir, but more importantly, that material would decay over time and create decades of water quality issues within the, the reservoir itself. So, this, uh, basically calls for a harvester to come in, take out all the trees, but then all the vegetation down to within six inches of, of the ground, they take that out and they remove it. Um, we looked at different options of potentially burning the material versus hauling it out, um, and gave the bidders the option to do various alternatives, and they, all of the bidders chose to, uh, move forward with actually removing all of that, um, material. Um, so the scope is for removing all that material within two-hundred-and-eight acres of the site that was not previously cleared. And, um, it's important to point out, we must maintain that hundred-and-fifty-foot undisturbed vegetated buffer around the lake. So, um, and once the lake is full, you will have trees around the entire area. So that's part of the permit, is maintaining that buffer, and so it really limits how, how many roads we can have going through there, and so clearing becomes a little bit more of a challenge. Um, the other thing that we, we have to do is get it done before we start filling the reservoir, obviously. Um, and you'll see from the map, I'm going to present the exit of the reservoir area is such that we have to do all of this before we start filling the reservoir, because it, as the water level comes up, it cuts off, um, that access point. So, that means we need to be done, uh, by December first, where we're targeting right now to start putting water in by early fifteenth of, of December. Now, some of the, the challenges that we have, um, the, the timber itself that's on-site, um, in this area has, uh, limited value. It has been, uh, timbered within the last twenty years, so it's, it's not, uh, really hardy timber, uh, that's available, so there's, there's a limited merchant value for that, for that, uh, material. Additionally, um, you'll see from the map, I'm going to present, it's very steep terrain, um, that we're, we're dealing with. Here, let me see if I can blow this up a little bit. Okay. Um, so you can see a cleared area that, that is up there is the area that's, um, associated with, uh, the dam construction. I wonder if it doesn't show. But everything that's in the black hatched area is the area that needs to be timbered. So you can see it's, it's really a bunch of different fingers that extend out to the outer extents of the reservoir area. The yellow dash line is the buffer that has to be maintained. So you can see that there's long haul distances to get this material out, um, to the various L locations, which are the loading locations. So the harvester will cut the trees and then basically bring them to those L locations where they will be loaded into, um, containers, or chipped into containers or loaded on trucks, and then will be brought out. Um, the, all of the traffic will be, uh, sent out through the water treatment plant site and onto sixty-one. Um, we are not going to be using Old Dallas Road for any of the, oh, any of the access, so, um, there will be a controlled turning lane and everything associated with water treatment plant access. So there'll be a significant number of trucks coming in and out of the site during this process, um, but it will be going onto, onto sixty-one, so there will be the, um, safety of that, of that improved entrance, it'll be there where it's taking place. Um, the, the, the terrain here, as I said, is pretty steep, um, and the limited amount of access area that's available, um, really limited the number of bidders that we had. This is a significant operation. Um, we did have two bidders that, that did present pricing, um, and there was a significant difference in value between the two. Um, Triple J, Triple J logging was the least expensive, and in terms of the difference in price, a lot of that is, uh, due to the fact that because this is such a large project, um, a lot of timber harvesters have actually a lot of backlog right now. Because we had such a wet, wet, um, winter time and springtime, a lot of timber harvesters have a backlog of, of other work, and so there, there's a limited availability of them out there, and, uh, obviously, the, the pricing, it reflects that. Um, so our recommendation is to go with Triple J logging, who's the, uh, the low bidder for the project. They are able to get it all done by December first. They would, uh, likely start by September first to, to get that done. Um, and then everything moves according to plan, we'll be able to be in a position to start, uh, filling the reservoir, uh, pretty much as soon as they're, as soon as they're complete. So that, like, address any questions?
They decided not to burn it because it's too much ash that could be in the water?
Yeah, it, it's actually a lot of, uh, additional labor for them associated with it. Um, we, we gave them a couple options. Um, there, there, there's a type of burning where they can pile it. Um, they, um, that, that was not something, that's a, a much higher-risk area, so they would have to do pit burning, um, associated with it, and, uh, per the state requirements, they couldn't start doing that until October. Um, so that, that sort of compressed the timeframe, it basically did not allow them to work throughout September. Um, and as they looked at the cost of, of handling all that material and burning, the lowers, everything associated with that, um, there was just a higher cost versus, versus what they could do to dispose of it. A lot of this chipped material they'll take and they'll use for fuel wood at some of the different mills and stuff, um, and, and so once again, a lot of their pricing is dependent upon how much that they can get, if any, of a credit back from the mills for the value of that.
Other questions? Thanks for being here, Kelly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Number four is a discussion to award the construction contract for the hangar one renovation at the Paulding Airport to the lowest responsive, uh, and responsible bidder, Stryker Contract LLC, in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, of course, in post two.
Uh, yes, this bid, we had five participants, so we're pretty confident that the bid is, um, a good bid. They ranged from three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars to four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. And, um, if you don't mind just for a second, before Scott comes up, but I'll have to come back, I'm gonna, uh, this is, the funding for this is actually through the general fund fund balance. Funding for two and three were actually through residual program funds, and the funding for the first bid award was actually SPOSS.
Good morning. As you know, this is an airport project, and it's, uh, it's been sort of a long time getting here, um, but I, I am pleased and, uh, hope you'll agree that this is worth the wait, uh, based on the bid results. We have, uh, significant savings, uh, by contracting out, and that, that reduces your through the county process and with county assistance. And I think that's the key to getting the price down, as well as expanding the competition on this project. Uh, we did have good results. The contractor, apparent low bidder here, is a striker. They've got experience in actually doing a lot of renovation work, and both can tell, they have a good rating, and, uh, we're gonna work with them to finalize the contract and the approval, and move forward. This is just the starting line, though. We've got a long way to go. The, the project is a hundred-day duration, you know, because of the airplane movements and things like that, it's gonna be some unproductive, unproductive time, so we're allowing about sixty days of actual work in a hundred-day period. Uh, if you approve, uh, once we get the contracts going and the contractors started by mid-September, we should be done by the middle of December. And, uh, weather, you know, of course, being a factor in that, and we're looking at some drier weather hopefully here in the fall. A couple of things, just to review the purpose, um, the project will take the existing twenty-four-thousand square foot or so corporate hangar at the airport and divide it into three spaces with a fire separation wall. That will allow us to bring unfueled planes into the, into the hangar, and will give us two separate rental spaces as well. And the end result for the county is, is, uh, really broadening our tax, tax base, and so we're glad to work with the airport in the center, which will actually come back to the county and pay for it, so hopefully in short order. Our project manager for this will be Bruce Coyle. He's instrumental in, in carrying, in answering the big questions, as well as working with the airport's architect, Jim Penny, and Terry Tippett, who's been very involved all along the way, and will remain involved as, as the staff will be involved in, uh, will carry out coordination with the contractor, with, uh, forecast on the weather and moving planes in and out, so that the work can be done safely, which is obviously very critical. As I said, it's a hundred-day completion date contract, once we get those to proceed, and without, glad to answer any questions. Terry's in the back here also, any specifics, he'd probably be better able to answer. Glad to take any questions.
Given the construction of this wall, planes that are using the hangar now, are they moved out of the hangar to, to, to risk air contamination?
Exactly. Uh, there, there's little, any work that can be done with planes in the hangar.
Is that part of the weather contingency there?
That is, that is factored into the time, so we do have a, a good bit of non-productive time built to be skate, to allow for that to happen. And with good weather, it can be done as quick as, um, inside of kind of sixty-day timeframe, and with, uh, other things they have to go on that can't be adjusted to the contractor, it would extend out to the mid-December day.
What would be the involvement with our fire department's guys for its oversight?
Well, um, like any project, the, the work will be inspected by staff, uh, community development inspectors, as well as the fire marshal. Fire marshal has, has been very helpful in making sure these plans meet requirements. There are some modifications, which I didn't cover, um, there's a good bit of modifications to the structure itself, and adding two-hundred-and-fifty feet of walls that are actually averaging over forty feet tall, um, with a double layer of, uh, fire-rated sheet rock on both sides with insulation. There's a lot of, um, adjustments to the piping and the fire sprinkler system that have to happen, and all that will have to meet requirements, and so, um, Chief Felkery Group will be looking at this with us, make sure we're meeting all the requirements that have been specified in the plans. And it'll be hand-to-hand really with, with all of our staff.
Questions?
I'll say, I'll say something else, not necessarily questions, but, you know, if you want, but you can stand there if you'd like to as well. Um, a lot, there's a lot of discussion around this wall. I'm gonna use the line, and Terry wants to build a wall, and he wants us to pay for it. Um, but there were three options that we had in this wall, and some of those haven't been discussed as much lately. The first option was obvious to build this wall, um, and I guess the initial projection of cost was a lot higher than this, than this has turned out to be. There was another option of doing a wall, straight down the middle, cut the hangar in two, and, um, fix the fire code issue there. The problem with, the problem with that issue is that we have a plane that needs a space bigger than half, half the hangar. So that was an option, but it was a less desirable option. And the third option is obviously do nothing. Doing nothing would, um, turn, turn, uh, taxpaying me a lot of that, out of that hangar. And so I just wanted, I just want to kind of recap those options, since we've had a lot of discussion to get to this point. And I want to, I want to share a little story if I can, because the public sees what happens up in these meetings, but the public doesn't always see what happens as we're working together to, to prep for this. And, um, when this first came out, it was, it was, uh, it was disgusting in an urgent manner, and, and we had a lot of rushing around and talking, and, you know, commissioners can be one-on-one, but over the two of us together, and it becomes an issue legally. So, uh, there's a lot of running around, and over here, back there, and over here, and all that. And the day that this came out, Terry, um, offered to spend his lunchtime going two-on-two with commissioners to help answer questions and try to help us be comfortable with the whole project and the way it was working, and to answer questions, and, as one who doesn't enjoy skipping lunch and who appreciates the time spent with Terry. Chuck and Sandy met with him, well, I met with him, and then after that, Brian and I sat in with, with Terry and talked it through, and I still had some issues with the whole, the, there were a lot of concerns mentioned, I won't go over them here. But I wanted to share a story on what happened after that meeting. We talked about working together, and, um, and this is just a good example of that, so I wanted to share. Sandy came to me, maybe ten minutes before the meeting started, it was, it was right up on our two o'clock meeting, and she said, "What do you think?" And I said, "Well, if you, if the board wants to move forward, I'll respect the board, but I've got some concerns, so if you want to vote on it today, I'll be a no." And, and she said, "Okay." And then she said, "Where's Brian?" Because she had a little fun Brian. Cause she had a little fun Brian. You know, the one-on-ones, all of the holidays coming. And we came in and we sat down and had the prayer and the pledge and all of that. I looked over to Sandy and I said, what are you gonna do? And she said, I think let's table it. And that decision to table it and answer the concern to the whole board resulted in $80,000 savings. Scott used the term worth the wait. And certainly it was worth the wait for us to take a step back and not rush into something because we were told it was an urgency to take a step back and make sure that we were doing the right thing the right way. And in the end, taxpayers' statement, they piled up. So thank you to Sandy and the board for doing that. And it was just encouraging for me to see that. That occurred to me actually this morning. I was on the way to get breakfast and that occurred to me and I thought, I'm gonna share. That's all I have to say about this wall.
Thank you, Ron.
I just wanna say, Terry, thank you for your patience. I know it's something that we need and we have needed for a long time, but thank you for your patience. This board has worked very hard. And Scott Green, thank you so much for the time that you've put into it. We, like I said, we've worked very hard at this wall and I think it's something that we can all be happy about.
Reports from committees and departments. We have none, public participation within items. We have Ms. Kathy Helms talk about new business number two, which involves Resolution 19-26.
Good morning.
Just a clarification there, she's talking about item number two. You just, the resolution you mentioned is item number three. Is that just a misstatement or?
It's new business number two.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The public hearing on rezoning case 2007-04-Z.
Yes, okay. I don't know. I sent everybody an email yesterday afternoon. It was right before 5:00. I don't know if you got a chance to read it. But basically, this is about the use of existing sewer systems. That we're putting residential housing on. When we, in April, you approved an expansion of the sewer in that area that to tie into a private sewer system and the county is paying $850,000 for that. This PRD from 2007 is required to be hooked into sewer because it is a PRD. So they will be utilizing this sewer system that we're just spending $850,000 on. You also, last month, the subdivision that was approved at Moses is also gonna be on sewer. 63% of the property tax we pay now goes to school board because of our lack of job-producing businesses. The school board has zero control over residential building. Until we bring these job-producing businesses to Pauline County, every subdivision will continue to raise costs for the school system and all government services, causing more tax increases. The sewer system has a specific capacity. And once we reach that capacity, it's gonna cost us millions to put in another sewer treatment facility for any commercial order where you're hooking all residential into these sewers. And again, you know, against the sewer is the tax increases for the extra demand on government services, including sewers. So yesterday, after I sent the email, I thought, well, I'm gonna go in and find this Seventh and Juniper's registration in the Secretary of State's office. And maybe I can find a registered agent, just to see what I can find out about this company. What I found out was, and Frank. What I discovered was, on August 27, 2011, the only Seventh and Juniper LLC in the state of Georgia was administratively dissolved by the Secretary of State, then Governor Kemp. So this company name that is listed on the agenda doesn't even exist. And this application is 12 years old. So I do see a lot of good things that are happening on this agenda. So I don't wanna just be critical, but I'm really concerned about the sewer. And of course, the agenda item number eight with the Aviation Academy, it's probably the most exciting thing on there for me. Thank you for your time. And really, I don't know that we should even be addressing an item regarding a business that no longer even exists. Thank you.
From the consent agenda, discuss action on two consented items. Number one is the DOT ordinance 19-04, meaning ordinance 70-53, approving speed limits and approving the use of speed detection devices on certain county roads. And number two is adopt Resolution 19-25, a resolution of Pauline County, Georgia, supporting the 2020 census. Would any of the questions like to move either of the two consented items to a regular business? There's none. We'll leave them where they are and move on to old business, which is discuss action to adopt Resolution 19-24, confirming effective session at the August 13, 2019, 2:00 PM, Board of Commissioners meeting for purpose of pending a potential litigation. Under new business number one is a public hearing on the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application. At this time, I will open the public hearing and call Colonel Chad Hutton to the podium to give an introduction and overview of this Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Thank you, Colonel Hutton, for being here.
Just like y'all, we've been using this grant for quite some time at the Sheriff's Office to help supplement our budget for equipment and different items. This year, in the grant, what we're, they're proposing a little bit over $16,000 for us. And we're wanting to use the funds for tactical vests and night vision. With our tactical vest, just like any manufacturer, they have warranties on them. And so they won't warrant them for five years. So we have to replace these vests every five years. A tactical vest now is around about $3,000 per person. So it kind of tells you the cost of them, they're pretty expensive. Of course, a tactical vest is different than our personal body armor that we wear in everyday uniform. Tactical vest is designed to stop rifle rounds. So it's a lot heavier and it's more cumbersome and our tactical unit utilizes them so. The night vision, the technology's constantly changing and it's getting better and better. So the night vision will help replace some old units that we have. And they're like first generation night vision. So they're at the end of their life. They're not supported anymore by the manufacturer. So if they break, we can't send them and have them fixed. They're not messing with it anymore. So that's what we're planning on using the funds for this year if y'all grant it. I'll be glad to take any questions. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Well, I need to also open it up, open the podium up to the public if anyone would like to speak on this use of funds in this business item. Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to new business number two, which is also a public hearing on rezoning case 2007-04-Z. And I ask, as I open the public hearing on new business number two, I'd ask Mr. Robinson, Chris Robinson, to come forward and give us some background information.
Good morning. This particular rezoning came in back in, actually like 2006 and was moved several times during the year in 2007, at which it finally became before the Board of Commissioners in November of 2007. This case was a rezoning to PRD and D1. It was a total of 73.1 acres, 54.8 being the residential portion and 18.3 being the commercial portion of D1 general system. This property is located in Dallas-Nivo, Nivo Road. It's on the southwest corner across from the Engels, which resounded and came into effect at that time also. This application, of course, was recommended by the planning commission back in that time period, 402, for 171 lots of single-family residential. There was, or there still is attached to this zoning, 23 stipulations, which would remain in effect if it's approved. And one of those stipulations, I wanted to bring up, is $500 a lot to the school system. And that's still in effect. Now during that timeframe of 2007, of course, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of things happening. I'm not saying one way or the other for this application, just saying there's a lot going on. I happen to be here. There was a drought that replaced a moratorium in October on any rezonings in that southeastern section of the county, or actually in Ho County back then. There's also a moratorium that went into effect during that timeframe in the southeastern section because we had a study done on future development of that southeast quadrant, which was associated with Cobb County sewer as well as development standards. And there was, it was in August or September 2007, a overlay district that was placed on in that area of the county, which also overlays this particular property. That was actually enacted prior to this being adopted and approved. That overlay district requires above and beyond standards than what a PRD can just be. PRD can be all 8,000 square foot lots. The overlay would require this PRD, if it's approved, to be limited to 60% of the proposed lots, being 8,000, with the other 40% would have to be 10,000 square feet or larger. And then looking at the overall impacts of that legacy quality overlay district that allows green space and landscaping architectural standards of that potential development, your lot count, which was originally proposed for around 171, would drop into 1.4, maybe even a little lower than that, depending on the terrain and topography. And so that's a little bit of the history on that. Like I said, there's 23 grants stipulations that we can make available for anyone that has a question or comment on that. And I know that that has representation here today. Any questions?
Yeah. All right, I was noticing in the background, so all that is gonna be gravity fed. We were talking about the sewage thing. And it's gravity fed to a pump that was put in place for this back then, is that correct?
This lift station that would support this subdivision was installed by this developer back to that day. And it is to the south side of this property, right there near Dallas-Nivo Road. And it was sized to service this development as well as the Engels across the street, which is services now.
Would that question ask, this time, or does it got a question? Sorry, Collette, was $2 million private investment?
I don't recall exactly what the cost was, but I know when you, that lift station is not, not a low-cost item. And it was sized to carry a larger amount than what actually was connected to it back then. And that low density quality residential, PRD has a per acre max of how much? It's three, three units per acre. It's a PRD. Being in the, that overlay, does it stay at three or? It actually, it actually drops to 2.6 units per acre max. And it does require that the larger required lots, 10,000 plus, be along the periphery of the overall development.
And if you said it right, so roughly 25% of this is set aside for commercial, likewise?
That's correct. It's 18-plus acres that was planned for some retail along the corners of Dallas-Nivo and Nivo Road. But that's a new one, I think eventually it was going to be in the area. That's great. It's actually, the lift station that's down there, actually, there's a force made going back up Nivo Road, back up toward Cobb Line at this moment.
And then a comment about your statement on the school system. I know Ron wasn't even born then.
I was, but Bear and also Brian and I are about the same age. He looks older, but.
It shows in the backup material that it's a volunteer stipulation. So how'd that work back then?
Well, back in 2006, mostly 2007, there's a lot of concerns with the impacts on school system as there are today, residential development. And back then, a lot of the developers, which back then, there was a lot going on with residential development. And they all agreed to voluntarily donate $500 at the time of planning, planning for this with the school system, in which at this moment, with some of the residential developments that have come back since the recession, I, we have collected about $198,000 from different developers over the past four or five years that has been directly sent to the school. So this is one that was in that time period and they had volunteered to do that. One thing I would, on the low density quality overlay, the PRD requires 15-foot perimeter buffers and the low density quality requires 25.
You mentioned the advocate's present in this is public hearing. I would like to ask that the advocate comment.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name's Chuck Brand and I'm with the SN Engineering Group. And I'm representing Dallas-Nivo LLC, who is the owner of the subject property. You know, we are excited that the commission is bringing this back in front of this body to come to a conclusion or decision regarding the rezoning application from 2007. A couple of things that I do wanna make light of, as far as the ownership issue, I believe Ms. Helms made a comment about Seventh and Juniper. When that was administratively dissolved, Dallas-Nivo LLC took over the responsibility and ownership for this parcel. So as far as the items that were described before with respect to the civil lift station, $2 million is pretty close to a hidden number that was invested into the sewer system in order to facilitate sewer to Engels. And again, the rest of the corners that are at Dallas-Nivo and Nivo Road. The owner of the property is veritable to all stipulations as they were in 2007, even with the voluntary stipulations that are provided. And any questions that you have, I'll be more likely to answer when we get to that portion.
Thanks, sir. Any other folks in the room, in the audience here, like to speak on this agenda?
I would like to ask a question about it. You get to come forward, please, Ron.
My name is Bruce Kitchens. I live on Faithful Road. I'm not against rezoning or nothing about it. What I wanna know is what is? What I want to know is what is the law after something that's been sitting there all these years, zoned or not zoned? Then it comes before, and then they want to build houses. I think it ought to go before your planning commission again and be rezoned, before anything's done. But what is the law on stipulation? Would it be legal or unethical to do it?
I'm going to ask our county attorney.
Yeah, I would, I would like to know that question answered.
This matter went before the planning commission back, I want to say, 2006, 2007. They made, made a recommendation of approval, I think four in favor, zero opposed, and I believe two abstaining from that. That was forwarded to this body with their recommendation, their recommending approval. This body ended up tabling the application. And the application remained tabled now for, I want to say it's probably 12 years. The Dallas-Nivo, I believe it's Mr. Charles Brock, who was affiliated with Seventh and Juniper, he brought it to the attention of commissioners that he would like to have this looked at again because he never received a decision from the county on its application, his application for rezoning. At the last meeting, the last board commissioners meeting, this, this matter was removed from the table for consideration here. So one of the items that is very important is that the public have an opportunity to comment on a pending zoning application. Typically, when the planning commission has rendered a recommendation in the case, there is not an additional hearing before this board on a matter. It was my recommendation, particularly in light of a new case that, I said it's a relatively new case, that came out of, I think it was out of Jasper County. But there, the Supreme Court said, when there is more than a three-month delay, that was those are the facts in that case, when there is a significant delay between the public hearing and the decision-maker ultimately rendering a decision on it, that the public does not have a meaningful opportunity to comment. And because in this case, the delay was 12 years, it was my recommendation that if the board decided to remove it from the table and begin reconsideration, that this be noticed as a regular zoning case, but that that public hearing occur before this board, since it's technically before this board right now and not in front of the planning commission. So I believe the zoning staff sent out the notices, and that is where we here, where we are here today, so the public can have a meaningful opportunity to submit its input and comment on the application.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kitchens.
Jason, could you give an opportunity, could you, could you give an opinion on the issue carried forward, a request by any, any of the great question?
Great question. Under Georgia law, Title 14 in particular, corporate code, an LLC, when it administratively dissolves, there's a statute that allows basically those that have an ownership interest in that LLC, or those that have an equitable interest in that LLC, to wind down the affairs of the LLC, to basically handle those things that are still hanging out there unresolved. This would typically be a common thing, or winding up that LLC to the extent it administratively dissolved, as Ms. Helms indicated, I think, back, back several years ago.
Do we need to see any sort of documentation that authorizes the entity that was mentioned a minute ago to handle this affair?
We could certainly ask for it. I believe that Mr. Rand can probably move them out and see what he has.
Now, have another member of the public that has indicated would like to speak?
He's a pretty quiet guy. I got something I need to say here. Last month or a couple of months ago, you talked about putting that store in out there, 1.6 million, which half coming from us, half from private citizens. Supposed to be for commercial purposes. Now we want to put homes at Ingles, and we want to tack into the store that we say is all used for commercial. Am I understanding that right?
I defer to Lori, but it's, it's not just commercial. It's a whole area.
Now, the thing was that last month, two months ago, about this LLC coming in. Now we want to bring this LLC in up at Abels and have something to do with the store. Is that right? And we're just going to pay to put in? Am I right or wrong?
This development that is under discussion at public hearing does not go to the Ridge Road sewer improvements that were discussed and agreed to within the last couple of months. This is at the Ingles pump station, which we refer to as our Nivo pump station. That pumps to Copperline.
Okay, so this one down here by the Kroger, that's nothing to do with this one going in that we're talking about now?
No, sir. It goes into an existing lift station further north that pumps to Copperline. Now that pump station, the, the pump station that is, that was under discussion a few months ago, does pump to this Ingles pump station. But it is not tributary to that pump station that, that sewer improvement down at Ridge Road.
This is too high-tech for me. This is too fast for me here, but they will have, so they will not affect anything to do with that store that's going in there, by, say, by, down by the Kroger?
No, sir.
Capacity-wise or nothing?
No, sir.
Okay. I think the link between what you're talking about, what this one is, is the developer and the private money that was mentioned for the sewer system that went in with the Kroger, was private money. And the board, Chuck worked really hard to get that through, and before he was here, Brandon Collatt worked very hard on that as well. County voted to, we voted to do that sewer work there at Ridge Road, where Laurie just spoke about. And that was the right thing to do, is fiscate with that developer. It wasn't the most popular vote that we cast, because a lot of you. No, I know. But sometimes the thing that you believe is the right thing to do is not popular. And so the board voted to do what was necessary to make, make sewer in that area work, fix an issue that was, had a Kroger, Kroger does a lot of volume, and one's in the business. And so we, I don't want to say payback or make things right, but the private investment was considered, and the board extended the sewer to be able to reach the commercial properties in that area. The same developer, the same developer you mentioned is involved with this, so the developer is the same. And this property that's being considered is, like Laurie said, goes into a different, different part of the sewer system. Obviously wood go into overall capacity of our sewer system, but not specifically the sewer capacity that was had there at Ridge Road. Does that help clarify anything?
Excuse my skepticism, but for 23 years I've lived out there, nothing at all. Now all of a sudden, private, public money going into a store, they're coming out to two miles down there at the Ingles, and all of a sudden, it's just, look, we got all these big things going on, but for 23 years, nothing. And if I'm right, Mr. Brock's involved in all of this somehow? Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
You know, it is a situation to where most of our infrastructure in this county has been put in, you know, that by private individuals.
No, I don't know that.
Well, I take your word. Yeah, developers, you know, over the years, and I am thankful about that.
Well, like I said, it just seems funny, for 23 years, and all of a sudden, everything's opening up, and the same guy involved in, at our expense, somewhere along the line.
Okay, I will ask, is there any other public that would like to speak on this matter?
Can I speak again on that matter?
I should too.
Yes.
I just think this needs to go back before planning and zoning. I don't believe that a decision should be made on an application that's 12 years old with the name of a company attached to it that no longer exists. I think it just needs to start over.
The reason that I think there's going to be hesitancy there is because we're no longer accepting applications for PRDs.
For PRDs, exactly. And there's a reason we're no longer accepting applications for PRDs. The reasons that we're not accepting applications for PRDs have been discussed over and over. So now we're going to go back to a 12-year application and say it's okay to put this PRD in. Why is this PRD different than, than future PRDs? This is not an existing PRD. This was an unresolved application by a company that no longer exists. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? I thank you all for your participation, and I'll close the public hearing at this time. New business number three is to discuss action to adopt resolution 19-26 approving the de-annexation of tax parcel 140.3.2.002 in post-warning.
Morning, everyone. This is a somewhat unique situation. Most of the time, we receive annexation requests. We have received a de-annexation request. That is governed by state law, specifically official code of Georgia annotated Section And the first step in a de-annexation request is for the county that would receive the property back as an unincorporated property to approve a resolution stating that they are agreeable to that de-annexation. This request was submitted on behalf of Highlands Residential Development. It is for a 1.25-acre tract located on Charles Carty Parkway, in currently the city limits of Hiram, and the map has just been brought up for us. Highlands is a contract to purchase a 30-acre tract behind that, which has been zoned R-55 in Paulding County. City of Hiram did not adopt the R-55 zoning designation, so they cannot rezonate to that, and I believe that is the main reason for this de-annexation request. I believe the applicant is here, if you have any questions for them or for me. Like I said, the de-annexation process, the first step is for the county to approve the resolution, but the approval of the de-annexation rests solely within the power of the municipal authority. So if this is approved, we will transmit it to Hiram for them to act upon.
This piece of land would add to the R-55? Would we have to go back through zoning?
It would have to go back through zoning, because it's currently zoned, that will leave R2, State of Hiram, which R2 and Hiram and Paulding County are identical, but it would have to go through, to be rezoned to R-55.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Page. Appreciate it. New business number four, discuss action to adopt revision to Civil Service Rules, Chapter 4, Recruitment and Selection, Section 7, Employment of Relatives. And please have Mr. Agar here help us address this issue.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As y'all are aware, we've had some recent discussions regarding our current policy on employment of relatives. And over the years, we've obviously grown quite a bit. We've got a much larger employed population, we've got more departments, bigger departments, more geographic locations, as well as more work crews throughout the county. And so we discussed having some broader consideration to employment of relatives. The proposed policy identifies the same relative relationships we had before, but in this case, we're saying we'll allow some employment of relatives from the same department, but still some restrictions. And I point that out also, but I think it's imperative to say first and foremost, good hiring practices rule above all else. So in doing this, it doesn't mean that it opens the door for simply favoritism or anything of that nature. We still need to apply good practices when we're hiring, get the best applicants for the jobs, and that's also a matter that keeps things in check with this. The key change on the policy that would allow relatives working in the same department, as long as they're not supervising, when a relative's not supervising another, they're not reporting to the same immediate supervisor, they're not at the same shift and location, and there is a overall prohibition that spouses cannot work in the same department. And I think when I talked to you, Mr. Stubb, what she said is, can you clarify for me the key points, and those are the key points of the proposal? Tried to make the existing policy we have, and also made it a little bit better in terms of readability and apply to where we are today as opposed to, I know it was written, and I don't know, and that was off the top of my head about several years ago. Certainly glad to answer any questions if you have them.
So basically, this, so the, the, we said that supposedly it's both departments. I said fire department, the water department, different locations. You can apply that rule to most departments.
Right. So several departments, particularly smaller department, I use Biden as an example. Myself included, we have a grand total of five people in the HR office. There's no two ways around it. I can't rearrange things so that I hire the relative of anybody else in my office. I couldn't say, well, we're just going to have this person report to this one, we're going to have this person report to another supervisor, and I've gotten around it. It would be in the same physical location, same shift, that would employ that being an option. When you're talking about maybe a fire department, you can have somebody at one station, sibling, or any other relative for that matter, working at another station, they're not reporting the same immediate supervisor, not at the same geographic location, that would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Agar.
Sure. Any other question? In the case of someone like a county administrator, that everyone reports to, to the board, you want to clarify that?
Frank and I have talked about that a lot. I think he and I would both take the same approach, that when it comes to his position or even my position, it would probably be inappropriate for either of us to have a direct family member or relative working in the county. I think that certainly opens the door for the impression or the perception of conflicts of interest. And I think as we go through this process, and we adopt this, allow folks to do it, department heads are still going to have to take that into consideration, if they feel like they have concerns about that, if you might have a situation where relatives could some kind of other have impact on financial decisions being made in the department. You certainly don't want to allow relatives to be in those type of things, to make decisions regarding employment decisions. The, in general, you just have to take the good practice of kind of avoid conflicts of interest where they're evident.
I'll say that the proposed change is well-done, and I appreciate your work on it. If it's going to be done, I think this is the manner that you would want it to be done. There's a phrase that was used, Brian, Brian said this a minute ago, opening the door. And it opens the door for some, I want to be careful how to say this. It opens the door for some problems that we could have. Just because the counties have a policy like this, just because we have one that Brian has worked on, and is pretty good as far as what it limits and how it's worded and all that, just because, just because of that, doesn't necessarily mean you should do it. We talk about the, some concerns that could be overlooked, and I don't want to get into all the hypotheticals, because at some point, you're going to say, well, is that really going to happen? I understand where this is coming from, and I think the intentions to bring forward are good. are good, and to find a way to hire some more people who all want to do jobs that we need people to do. I honestly believe that's the intent, was bringing this forward, and I can appreciate that. But as a matter of policy, I think the existing, the existing policy we have preventing, preventing employment relatives, it is a better policy.
With that being said, I come from a family of police officers and deputies. My father was a police officer. My brother was a police officer. I think when you're in that particular group of family, father, son, uncles, aunts, and the same with the fire department. If you're a father, naturally, your son probably wants to be a firefighter when he grows up. I know they start young and say, I want to be a firefighter, but that's my reasons for going along with this. I think that they should be able to be what they want to be when they grow up.
I watched the video that we did positively calling out, and you noticed it, and there were three little kids pushing that fire engine. And I think it's amazing when you talk to families in public service and you have three, four, or more generations of people who, and their family, to devote their lives to public safety, and that's, that's a good thing. But it does open a door when you talk about, you know, someone's been a firefighter, for example, for a long time, they have a son that's coming in. It creates at least a potential issue when you talk about hiring someone who's a family member who wants to follow in the father's footsteps, but good practices, good, good employment practices have to go first, like Brian said a minute ago. And so when you, you have an issue there with potentially hiring a family member of one of your employees over someone who may be more qualified. And I understand that's a hypothetical, and I understand that being a family member, under this proposed policy, being a family member doesn't guarantee you anything except an opportunity to apply. I think it's a silver screen. I want to thank you.
I want to thank Sandy for your support. And, you know, when you, when you have a place where you cohabitate, it's, it's a different environment, you know, for the fire system and stuff, and I appreciate the fact that you've noticed that. But, you know, when we came, I came to Brian with this, and he did, he threw up some flags, and I understand, and it's the same thing, that's what you were talking about today. But I reached out in the private, and I talked to a lot of human resource directors and stuff in the private, and that are doing the nepotism, and I asked him, you know, point blank, you know, what's, you know, what's the issues? And they said, they're the same issues, and we have them, and we deal with them the same way. I think the direct report is pretty common, but outside of that, I think that we would be missing people who live in the county already, who possibly, you know, would want to stay and work in the county because they've seen their parents do it. Long-term employees versus people that come and go, I think we're missing out on good opportunities, especially in the fire department. And I'm thankful that you, you did such hard work on it, and I think the compromise between you and I, I think is a great thing.
It's my understanding that, Brian, that the way we're addressing this possible inability for our son to follow his, follow his footsteps was to require a different location and the different, you can't report for the same person. I think we're leaving something out if we don't recognize the fact that it's not a perfect world, and if you get in a hiring situation where it's one of your own relatives, and then you possibly even unintentionally exclude somebody of a different race, somebody that's, you know, not in the family, that they lose that opportunity. And that's why I thought we were trying to discuss this and upgrade our policy, is because we, we are a much larger county, and we don't want to have a reputation that, yeah, you know, this guy's dad was a firefighter, he made a great firefighter, he knows all about it, to the exclusion of someone else that's trying to come into that career in that pattern. So we're just looking at it a little bit like that.
If I could respond to that, I pointed out those four primary issues, but additionally in the policy and your backup, if you could bear with me, address the appearance or existence of favoritism, family-related disruptions to workplaces further addressed, specifically says in the policy. To avoid conflicts of interest, employees are prohibited from suspending employment decisions, dispute terms and conditions, auditing or approving work or financial transactions, hiring, job assignment, evaluations, promotions, compensation benefits, disciplinary actions, personnel actions. So to kind of get to the point you're bringing, that's very explicitly in the policy, and that is a prohibition against employee can't do that when it involves a relative.
Sir?
Happened to my own, older, difficult, in order to work, five, eight, nine. I had to follow the sons, daughters, wives, cousins, cousins, I had to follow them, you know, you just got treated by the same, I tell you the truth, I'm a family member more than I am of the employees, so, you know, long we do what we're supposed to do, we do it right. See, most problems with it, it says, I appreciate you taking the time, and I know it's been back and forth, but, you know, times is different. And I should say, a few of them were saying, said also, when you get a firefighter or a policeman, you get their son, you get their dog, and like, be the same following the same footsteps. You know, in the past, we've just been mismanaging some good employees.
Other comments? Thanks so much, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Number five, to discuss action to approve issuing a notice to proceed with the East Hiram Sewer Improvement Project to John D. Stevens, and approved the thirty percent guaranteed maximum price not to exceed nine million one eighty-one thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. Post three. Ms. Ackerman.
To start with, the award was made to John D. Stevens for the progressive design-build contract for the East Hiram Sewer. And that is the sewer that, on the south end, starts at the, at the Greystone complex down on Ninety-Two and Ridge Road, and provides gravity service to north to Licklog Creek, a pump station, and then a horse mane that will be our first connection with, under the Sweetwater Agreement with Cobb County. We proceeded with the, with the thirty percent design, and the first thing we did was find that, that we had some assumptions that, that were, were changing in an exciting way. And we started factoring in some of the commercial industrial development potential that would be tributary to this, this project, and also looked that if we're serving that industrial, commercial industrial area, that there's an opportunity to take that Ingalls pump station that we were talking about earlier and bring it into this East Hiram Sewer and send it to Cobb County, which is nearby gravity, it's tributary to. We have, we have reached the thirty percent milestone and are bringing forward a thirty percent design estimate of guaranteed maximum price of nine million one eighty-one three sixty-four fifty. This is a, we, we discussed this last week with our Water and Sewer Advisory Board, and let me just be clear, this is the entire project just based on a very, based on a thirty percent design effort. So the design is not complete, so a guaranteed maximum price at this point reflects certain contingencies, and we expect that at every stage beyond this, we will be refining that number in a downward direction. And have already started talking with John D. Stevens and Fries and Nichols about ways to optimize this, to change pipe materials, and to, not, not to risk the integrity of the project, but to provide better value. And so we will continue, we would continue to work with them on that. Our next step is easements, getting permission on, on the property, complete the design effort, and get underway. We're already in coordination with GDOT, because we will also be in that Ninety-Two construction. We'll be out there at the same time they're still working. But we are preparing to have stub outs to this project so that the sewer line can continue up Licklog Creek and serve those tributary areas to the west.
This date of the Water and Sewer Advisory Board?
Yes, we did, and in fact, the next three items all were under the Water and Sewer Advisory Board last, last week. I forgot to mention the funding on this. There's a Greystone contribution, a general fund contribution, and then water funds.
Completion date, general idea?
We are, let me see if I put that in your package. We are still looking at being done in October of next year, in time for, prior to the time that Greystone is planning on moving in.
You knew I was asking, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Laurie. Guess we're going to hear from you some more. And number six, is any other question? Number one. Number six, that is to discuss action to approve the amendment to the scope of services with Chattertech Incorporated for the Copper Mine RWF Treatment Capacity Expansion Project to include the reuse pump station upgrades and equipment tax incentives assistance at a total of thirty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Post three.
Thank you again. The, as we've been moving forward with the design for our Copper Mine Waste Water Expansion, we identified that the water needs of the system are going to exceed our ability to provide them under or out with our existing reuse system. The water that we use within the plant is not the drinking water we supply to people's homes. We use, we use a portion of our affluent and recycle it and use that as plant water. And so this reused pump station is to supply our water needs within the, within the, the plant property. The, we use potable water as a backup source if that pump station is down. So this is a real integral part and out of being cost-effective in our operation. We also were working with Tampa about how do we get, take advantage of tax credits, tax savings, and this is a, being a water pollution control project, we're eligible for a refunding of our taxes, but we're going to need some additional support through construction to capture that data and assist our finance department in preparing that rebate, those rebate forms.
Any questions? Moving on, number seven, is to discuss action to purchase Kubota membranes on quotation number zero-eight-one-four-one-nine dash one dash, V E C dash Romeo Oscar in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty dollars for the replacement of existing membranes at the county's wastewater treatment plant. Ms. Ackerman.
Let me start by, so I don't forget, that the last item and this item are funded through the Water and Sewer Renewal and Extension Fund. The, we have four MBR plants, and they are the membrane bioreactor plants, and I think each of you has seen the membranes that, that we have. We purchase replacement membranes on an annual basis. We're coming to you early in the fiscal year to, to purchase sixty-eight-hundred membranes. That is, out of the total membranes we have is thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred. We have been replacing them on a, on as needed basis. We started several years ago with damaged membranes at our Copper Mine Plant prior to the headworks being improved. But we are also at this point now dealing with older membranes that are already at fourteen years old at the upper Sweetwater Plant. They generally have a lifespan of about ten years. So we've exceeded that life. We're starting to see some of the membrane fabric actually peeling off the plate so that it is, it functionally means we can't put as much water through the plant, decreasing our capacity. So we're asking for this. It is, it's early in the fiscal year to be requesting this, but it's got a three-month lead time before we will see those, and our plant staff has just finished putting in the ones that were purchased in, in fiscal year 2019. This is the only cost associated with this. Our, our staff does the replacement with our own forces.
Questions? Thank you again, Ms. Ackerman. New business number eight is to discuss action to adopt resolution nineteen dash twenty-seven, requesting that the federal and the nation administration release approximately two-point-nine-six-four acres from federal obligations for the purpose of constructing a new aviation academy. And we're pleased to have the airport director, Mr. Terry Tippett, with us to answer any questions and give us an overview of this.
Okay, real briefly, I'll explain why this is necessary. Everyone is aware that the state of Georgia intends to build an aviation academy, they're calling it, it's an A and P school, Aviation Maintenance School, that is planned to be built at Paulding County Airport. And what people may not realize is that the funding for the property at the airport was reimbursed to the county at a rate of ninety percent from the FAA. So the FAA paid for the seven-hundred-and-seventy-plus acres at the airport at a ninety percent rate, and that gives them a say in how that property is being used. And there's a rather complex process that we have to follow when we request for that property to be released back for some non-aviation purpose. And for technical reasons, a maintenance school is considered a non-aviation purpose because it doesn't involve flying airplanes, it involves the maintenance of those aircraft. And the state has a requirement through state law to own property that they're building and building on. So there's a lot of technicalities in dealing with the various government entities involved here. And so early on in the process, we got with Chattahoochee Tech, the Tactical College System of Georgia, Properties Commission, Georgia Properties Commission, Airport Authority, your board, and we came to the conclusion that the best place, at that time, we thought to put the school, was going to be on that property just adjacent to the main terminal building, and we had set aside three-point-nine acres that we were going to request from the FAA for release so that the school could be built on that property. We prepared that release package, four-hundred-plus pages, sent it into the FAA, and they have responded back that they consider that property to be, to retain value for aviation purposes, and they have requested that we seek an alternative location for the property, or for the project. So we have met again with the school and with Georgia Properties Commission, and our backup site is the site right as you come onto the airport property on the right-hand side where the fire station and the nine-one-one center were originally intended to be located. The nine-one-one center has now been built in the New Hope Technology Park, and the county has purchased property to put the fire station in that area on the north. purchased property to put the fire station in that area on the north side of 278 instead of on the property there of the airport. And so that makes this property potential, potentially releasable from the FAA, and they have informally notified us that they would look favorably on that location. So in order to make that an official request, we have to move forward with providing all of the documentation so that we can get federal determination on the releasability of that property. Because the airport authority and the Board of Commissioners are cosponsors on the airport, it is required that both boards have a public vote in a public meeting like this to voice your support for this project so that I can include that in the request that we send forward to the FAA. In other words, they don't wanna release property unless all sponsors of that property are in agreement that that's what they wanna do. So that's what we're asking you to do today, is basically we're moving the location from the east side of the terminal to the west side of the terminal, to where the old fire station plan was, and our board, the Polton County Airport Authority Board, has tentatively scheduled a called meeting for next Thursday, assuming that you approve this action today, tonight, then we will have a called meeting to do likewise. Basically, we will approve virtually the same resolution that you have before you today. And at that point, I'll be able to submit the package to the FAA and formally request for permission for this property to be released. So it, it is just a normal part of the process that we're going through as we're negotiating with the FAA on where the school is gonna be located, and basically they are asking us to move the location from where we had selected to this location, and we believe that this is, still remains a very viable location, and in fact has some advantages such as longer road frontage, better access to the utilities, and so forth. So it's not a horrible solution for us by any stretch of the imagination, but it is part of the process that I, I do need your board to approve this resolution so that the FAA has before them a consensus from both cosponsors that we're in agreement on this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Terry, you alluded to this, I think, just a second ago, just for clarity, this site, even though it wasn't the first site that we requested, does it meet all of the requirements that the college system has for having that school and having that school work away?
We believe that, yes.
And I guess it's a good thing we put that fire station somewhere else.
Any other questions?
I think it's important to note that all six members of the state delegation are in strong support and collaboration with all the efforts for this Aviation Maintenance Academy, so real team effort to get this through.
It has been. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. That is the conclusion of regular business, public participation on non-agenda items, no one has signed up. We do have requirement or need to go to the executive session. We're pending a potential litigation and accept a motion without effect. I'll make the motion there. Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Kager, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand determined to go into the executive session. You're calling the regular session, the regular work session back to order, and we don't have any motions to bring after the executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I agree, sir.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Kager, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand certain.